Okay, we'll go ahead and get the work session started with PCC. It is May 3rd, 2022. President, our councilmembers, Dr. Ryan, Councilmember McFerrin, Councilmember Martinez, and Councilmember Veronica, and myself. Okay, so what are we doing here, gentlemen, folks?
So this is Michelle and Travis from PCC. This is our billing company for the ambulance services. They're going to kind of go over everything, the processes and stuff that we do between the two of us and also incorporating in the EMS service. So we're going to kind of walk through, tell you what happens on a day-to-day basis. And she's going to start off with the fee schedule and how we get paid.
Okay, so hello.
Hi.
Thank you for asking us to come in and kind of outline the process a little bit. PCC has worked with the city of West Liberty for several years. And so I do want to just kind of go through the process first and freely ask any questions that you have, because it's really a lot more detailed and complicated process than one imagines. And so I am available to answer any questions as you guys have them. The first thing I want to talk a little bit about is how the ambulance services pay. Okay, the handout that was handed out to you that looks like this one is an example of the ambulance fee schedule. It is the payers that you are contracted with. From left to right, you'll see well-marked Blue Cross Blue Shield. You'll see Medicare has three boxes, and then Iowa Medicaid off to the right. Okay, so we'll first talk about the contracted payers. Ambulance services, when they are dispatched out, when an ambulance transport occurs, your reimbursement is based on the payment for the insurance that the patient holds. Okay, so that could be anywhere from Medicare, Medicaid, commercial insurance, work comp, VA, liability, any of those types of payers. The first payers that are on this sheet are payers that you're contracted with. That means that when an ambulance transport occurs, you're actually going to receive a payment based on their fee schedule that they provide. So other than Blue Cross, Medicare and Medicaid are federal and state payers. Okay, by contracting with them, we can bill that insurance plan. But we can only bill what they will allow us to be paid. Okay, so for example, Medicare, we'll just use the rural example here. It would be the Medicare column right in the middle of those three boxes. For example, you're actually paid, if you're charging $13 a mile for your mileage reimbursement, you're paid $7.70 per mile for Medicare. Okay, and for base rates, you might charge $6.50 or something of that nature. For an ambulance base rate at the ALS emergency rate, you would be receiving $4.2527 out of that $6.50. These are examples, I'm just kind of giving you an example, so you can see the fee schedule that is being used to reimburse your ambulance transports does not necessarily pay 100% of what you charge. Okay, so when the ambulance transport occurs, the EMS crew members will document all of the medical record. They document services provided, they document that tells us the level of service to bill for. Okay, they document loaded mileage, they document supplies used. Okay, so all of those things are in the medical record that go to the billing representative that applies charges to your claim. So once your claim's sent to insurance, insurance will process the claim based on the insurance reimbursement that's listed here for those contracted payers. Or if it's a non-contracted payer, they're going to pay you based on what you charged. Okay, so that's how you get paid. Each ambulance transport can be different. If a patient, for example, is a self-pay patient, then that would go into a self-pay cycle right off the bat. We would send an invoice to the patient. We do contact the patient early on in billing phase. We discuss a payment arrangement that works within their billing cycle or within their budget, but something to get reimbursement coming back to the city for services provided. We also send claims out to the insurance companies, and we send these claims on a regular basis. The ambulance service, when they document their medical record, their medical record is complete, accurate, and it's marked as ready to bill. So it can be done as early as the day that they complete that ambulance transport. If it's done today, for example, the electronic process that we use to come over to the billing company will have those ambulance trip reports so that we can start charging out and sending to insurance automatically the very next day. Okay, so everything's very electronic. We do get things on a timely basis. We encourage the crew members, so ambulance crew members, to document their trip reports regularly. Number one, because it's good for liability purposes, right? It's hard to remember things, the longer the time, from the time it occurred to the time it's documented. But not only that, because there's insurance timelines for submitting claims. So you know, that's an important factor. We really don't have any issues. I mean, they're getting trip reports processed to PCC on a timely basis. But some of your payers only give you a short amount of time, like 60 days, to submit a claim to insurance. Okay, VA is a good example. They have a 90-day time filing limit. So if we don't get a January claim until after March, right off the bat, we may not get reimbursed because we didn't get the claim there on time. So there's important time restrictions. That's part of what goes into medical billing for ambulances, really medical billing for any type of medical provider, because there's timeframes now where in the past there hasn't been. But do you guys have any questions on the fee schedule? Any questions over here? Okay, bask away.
I was just curious if you had some statistics on what would be the average or the mean of self-pay amount? If you guys know what that...
We do. When I get through the reports and...
The charge amount?
Yes.
Are you talking about what they bill a self-pay?
Yeah.
Or like how many self-pays are being billed?
No, no, like if there's, on an average, what is billed for self-pay?
If you go to like your very next page... Oh, this is a cash receipts by summary report. I kind of wanted to show you first like where we come to the rates in which you're paid. So that was the first fee schedule. The second page shows you what your payer mix is. Okay, on the average, and this report is actually for March, so it would be March receipts. Okay, not necessarily March dates of service, but this is the receipts that came in and were paid in the month of March. So for self-pay, about 8% of your receipts for the month of March are self-pay reimbursement. Okay, it doesn't mean that's how many we have outstanding, it just means that's what was paid during that period of time. And I have an aging report here that shows you the total outstanding for self-pay too. So that gives you an idea of how many of our total reimbursements, our total accounts receivable right now, is self-pay versus insurance. So I have that coming too. But this just shows you in your community, this report, and I don't know, did you want to report something like that as well? I feel like you're kind of in the dark. Okay, all right. So anyhow, this report will tell you that Medicare is your top paying insurance or reimbursement. 32% of your receipts for the month of March were Medicare. So your age limit for ambulance transports is in that 65 and over category. Then the next highest would be Blue Cross Blue Shield. You must have also a pretty young community that holds Blue Cross Blue Shield. That could be some companies in town, their group health insurance is Blue Cross. That could be why that's such a high percentage, but that's a good thing. Blue Cross has a pretty healthy fee schedule, so that's good to see that as a high number. And again, this is kind of the luck of the draw. Each month, the claims that are processed are based on what's outstanding on the accounts receivable. So this can change. We find it pretty regular in communities because we're submitting claims on a regular basis, we're making sure that we're following up on outstanding balances, and so therefore we're able to regulate the amount of income that comes to your mailbox every single month.
So Michelle, just a quick question.
Yep.
So after you guys have billed them, let's say insurance then denies it, then does it go out to self-pay? Do we then bill the customer for it at that point in time?
We do, and that's kind of the nature of insurance billing. It could be that they weren't covered at all during that, for that particular data service, it could be they were covered partially, and now there's an extra amount that's called coinsurance or copay due. That amount is then billed to the patient after insurance does pay. The patient is held responsible for the full amount of the bill as long as they can be held responsible. Okay, so Medicare only allows an ambulance provider to bill the fee schedule rate. So there is some contractual adjustment for Medicare and Medicaid claims. We can only bill the contractual amount that Medicare allows us to bill for.
And the rest gets written off?
And the rest is a contractual adjustment, because we're contracted with Medicare, we have to abide by their fee schedule. So every claim, if your claim example, again, if we use $600 for a claim example, out of $600, Medicare might have proved $500. They're going to pay 80% of $500, so 400, I guess? And then $100 will be the patient's responsibility. Right? Can you do that right? And so that's 500 total. That extra $100 that's over and above their allowable is a contractual adjustment. So there are contractual adjustments in what you receive for your Medicare reimbursements. Okay, and it's the same for Blue Cross Blue Shield too. If you're billing higher than what Blue Cross Blue Shield's rates are, ambulance transports are paid up to the allowable amount. Anything higher than the allowable amount, if it's a Blue Cross claim, you would actually enter, we enter as a contractual adjustment. So the main thing to understand is that we have rules that have to be followed in regards to insurance and contracts. For ambulance billing, Medicare and Medicaid and Blue Cross are your three top payers. That's why I printed those fee schedules for you to kind of look at and to kind of understand. So when our reports come out each month, we will enter charges, the total amount of charges. Our company makes sure that we have them all. So you know, if your ambulance is transporting a patient, or you know, 100 patients a month, we make sure that every single ambulance transport is accounted for. So if it's a billable transport, there are some where you will, the ambulance will respond and the patient refuses service. Those are things that obviously we're not applying charges for unless that's part of your fee schedule. So, but every single ambulance transport is accounted for, and that's part of the reports that we send back to you. So we know exactly how many to account for, we report that many to you as well. Okay?
I do have an answer for you for the average charge. If you look at that front page of the reports, about the bottom 25% of it, there is a line that says average charge per transport. And overall, for the first three months of this year, it's $542. So that's about the average charge. Doesn't necessarily apply just to self-pay, but it should be about the same, same for everybody, really.
So the first thing, so what we typically do is we will review with ambulance providers on an annual basis to be sure, you know, if there's change, charge changes that they want to entertain, that's something that you can do. You know, with the price of gas going up, with the price of expenses for supplies and things like that, you know, charge changes are the only way that the ambulance service really has a way to increase reimbursement. You know, we don't control how many patients go by ambulance. Obviously, that's, it's a mystery every single month. We're not sure how many are going to be transported by ambulance, and we're not really in the business of creating more ambulance transports anyway. But you have the control of your reimbursements based on setting your charges.
And just to further explain on that process at the city... So just like tonight, we have, on a quarterly basis, all of our supervisors receive the fee schedules for their departments for updates or, you know, review and update the charges. And based on history, the ambulance board, they set the fee schedule on the recommendation from the EMS service, such as the coordinator. They'll provide them a recommendation, and then the board will set those, and then they present those to the city to update as far as the fee schedule. So that's just the process of how those fees would change on the city side. And then we report them over to PCC to make sure that they've got updated charges to apply for the billing. So that is how that process is handled. Does that get updated like once a year?
A quarter.
It goes to, for example, it would go to, it's mailed to Chief Sickles. Chief Sickles then would review that on a quarterly basis. My understanding, he would review that with his EMS coordinator, and then they would take recommendations to their ambulance board. It hasn't been changed for a couple of years now.
Right.
I think it was in 2019 was the last one.
The last change of...
Yeah.
I think it's pretty close to the Blue Cross rates, isn't it?
Yes, I think that's what they were following along with.
Blue Cross hasn't raised their rates for three years now.
Yeah.
So they've been kind of sticklers about actually paying what it costs to run meetings.
I was going to say, I believe it was 2019 when we had that last update.
So what can we actually change in fees, just gas mileage and stuff like that?
Well, you can change your base rate. The rates that you can bill to insurance are a base rate. The base rate covers all service provided in the ambulance. Loaded mileage covers the loaded mileage, the mileage in which the ambulance is, or the patient is in the ambulance from the point of pickup to the destination. And then you are able to bill supplies separately when it's applicable, meaning when they use a supply, you know, that's separate, disposable supply. There's a couple of payers who don't pay for those supplies separately, so it's not a foolproof way of increasing reimbursement. Like I said earlier, your supply charges are going up. They are, they're across the nation, they're going up. Your gas prices are going up. Those are all things to kind of think about and consider. Those people who make those decisions to raise rates would kind of factor those into their rates. We typically look at this cash receipt summary report that I was, it's page two of that fee schedule packet. We look at, okay, where is the best thing for your buck based on your insurance, based on your payer mix? If you have a lot of just Medicare patients, because we're contracted with Medicare, charging more doesn't give us any more income, because they're going to pay us a fixed rate, Medicaid as well. But you have other insurance companies that do pay you, commercial insurance companies, private, you know, private insurance companies was 10% of your income for March. That's a pretty good amount. There's VA, there's Blue Cross, there's liability. So there's still a good amount of income that's going to be impacted by a rate change.
There's 8.8% people who have to pay that out of pocket.
And then there's the self-pay patients, exactly. So you do have to consider that just by increasing your rates doesn't necessarily solve the entire issue.
It's not going to compensate.
Because, right, you're going to also increase the price for patients who are uninsured. So...
And also the amount that you're going to get, because even though they're billing, that doesn't mean they're going to pay. So being able to make sure that we have the income with the billing going hand in hand.
Yeah, we have 100% control over that.
Right, what we can control is the information that comes to billing. We know right now that patient demographics are the biggest impact in what we do. If we have a patient, if we have an accurate patient address, date of birth, social security number, phone number, we're able to locate that patient, either to verify insurance or move on and set up a pay plan of that nature. We can't control a self-pay environment. I can't control someone else paying their bills any more than anyone else can, really. But what I can do is if we have valid, accurate demographic information, if that patient has insurance, we can get that information, we can get that claim filed, and we can get that income turned around back into your bank to pay for the expenses that you're incurring constantly on a timely basis. But without demographic information, it's, we're in a constant battle to locate patients, right? So the best time to get demographics is really at the time of transport. We do work with the hospital, if we're missing some information, we'll try to obtain information from the hospital in which the patient was transferred to. And then we utilize lots of insurance discovery portals and accesses and things like that. But as you can imagine, they need the date of birth and the social security number for that patient in order to kick out the information that we need. And so patient demographics is really where it all starts. Then pricing your services correctly, so it covers all the bases for which you can be reimbursed for services provided, which I think we've done a pretty good job with, but it's probably a good idea for the EMS district or for the ambulance service to review those at this time, just because of the nature of supply costs going up. And everybody, you know, it's just something that can be reviewed. It doesn't mean you have to make a change, it's just a good time to review that. You want to stay ahead of that. Loaded mileage is really one area that is a common factor for contracted payers as well as non-contracted payers. So even just reviewing your loaded mileage rate and making a change in that one fee could make a difference in your income. So...
And PCC did, so the last time I remember when we did update the billing, PCC assisted with a lot of information as far as, you know, what's in this report here that helped the board and the EMS coordinator come up with what we have right now as the current fee schedule.
And that was in 2019?
Yeah, it was 2019 or 2020, somewhere in there.
That's, yeah. But it was either 2014 or 2015.
Right, because in 2018, we went to PCC.
Yeah, that's when we traced for it.
And that's when you traced.
You guys helped us with...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So of this packet, the next page that I put in there is actually your payer mix so far for the year. I mean, just gives you kind of a more global look at what your payer mix changes to. When you look at one month, it's hard because things change. But I ran this report by, from January 1st to March 31st, so it shows you first quarter. And you'll be able to see Medicare and Medicare HMOs. Medicare is 26.3. Medicare HMO, all that means is there's some Medicare replacement plans out there. There's still Medicare, they're just called something different, like Humana, United Healthcare, even Blue Cross administers a Medicare plan in our state.
It just depends on what they sign up for.
What they've signed up for, yeah, exactly. So anyhow, so when you add those together, really, you know, Medicare reimbursement is close to half of what you're receiving, for this year anyway. And the next page behind that, I ran the report for last year, because we analyze these reports and we look at them quite frequently, kind of point them out to our contact people that we work with, either at the city or at the EMS, and so that they're aware of kind of where their payer mix is at too. So the one thing that we, I don't know if we want to open up this can of worms, but we haven't talked about so far with fee schedules is Medicaid. Medicaid right now, there is a program called GEMT that you guys are participating in. It's ground emergency medical transportation. It is an additional payment for Medicaid occurrences or Medicaid encounters when the service is an emergency transport. So those rates, those fees are factored into the reimbursement that you see here.
Well, the ambulance crew actually has to go through all of their costs for the year and put it all into this, it's about a 12-page report that they give to the state. And the state has their auditors go through it, make sure that what you're reporting looks right. And then they basically set your rate for the next year. So it does take a lot of extra time and work for the ambulance to do it, but it does come back to them in some form of supplemental payment for these Medicaid patients. It was, it's exactly the same program that hospitals tap into for the government, you know. You ever hear of the hospitals, they're getting, you know, supplemental payments for different programs all the time? This is exactly the same program, it's just now that the state has the law set in place, then ambulances can now participate with it.
And I'll just add to that, Travis. So yes, we, so we have another third party, the city contracts with to manage. So currently, Sandy Pike and I work with that contracted party to provide them a lot of the information that comes from PCC. We provide all of the entire revenues, the entire expenditures. Yeah, there's several pages that we have to go through for that report that we're, and it's a compliance report. And so, and then this party then also provides an annual report, so you know, because those payments are already within what we're receiving, it gives you, from their, from the whole compliance report, it gives you a breakdown of what your actual, you know, GEMT, what you're getting back in those supplement payments. So...
And that's done annually?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, every year.
Once a year.
So once a year?
Yep.
Once a year, they do a cost report.
A cost for your...
A report, okay.
For compliance.
For compliance, okay.
But PCC provides us a report on a monthly basis that provides us within what we're receiving, what was actually the supplement GEMT funding as a part of that. So we have that available to us.
Yeah, so Iowa's program was built to, this is just the way that the state of Iowa set it up. They set it up to have that ambulance supplemental payment be on a claim-by-claim basis. So each ambulance transport where a patient may present with Medicaid-only insurance, if it's an emergency transport, you're allowed to bill for the normal base rate and mileage reimbursement, any supplies applicable, because there are some supplies that Medicaid will allow to pay for. And then they do allow you to pay or to charge the supplemental payment. Your supplemental payment is somewhere around $343.19, something of that nature. It's kind of low, actually. So I'm not sure why that came out low from the cost reporting, but it is an extra $343 that you receive for every ambulance transport where the patient has Medicaid and they went in an emergency fashion. Typically, that's the case. Your ambulance service doesn't do a whole lot of non-emergency transports. Typically, if it's a 911 dispatch, they leave immediately. That's the definition of an emergency transport. So any emergency transport, that GEMT, that supplemental payment is tied to those claims. So again, we kind of back up to the demographic information. As you can imagine, date of birth and social security number is pretty important if that bonus money is tied to a Medicaid payment. Because if I don't know that patient has Medicaid, I can't bill it to Medicaid, and I can't get that bonus money either. So those things all come back to really just very good demographics and things like that. So we, of course, are very good about, you know, requesting information, checking, do you know this patient, those kinds of things, as well as utilizing all of the insurance discovery portals that we have available to us to be sure that we're not missing any opportunities for payment for you.
So to be involved in this program, is there a cost to that? Is there a cost to that?
Yeah, we have a quarterly fee that we pay to the state to participate in the program.
Oh, there's a quarterly fee?
I believe it's a quarterly fee. And let me make sure I'm telling you correctly, but I would be able to provide you what the GEMT participation cost is. And again, it seems to me like it's billed on a quarterly basis.
The reason why I said that is because I noticed on our current vendor vouchers claims list we're going to be talking about later on, there is a line item that says GEMT, and it's for like $400.
Correct, it's a quarterly...
Four hundred and something.
And I believe, as I understand it, the way that is, and again, I don't take this for the correct answer, this is just based on what I know, but I would definitely get you the correct answer. It's based on the percentage, or it's based on an amount. I think it has to do with possibly what our budget, maybe the calls. There's some calculation that decides what that quarterly fee is. And then we also pay a, again, we contract with a third party to help us stay compliant for that reporting purpose. And I think that's annually, I think it's $2,500 a year. But those would have to be, those are the expenses... those are the expenses, and that's not counting administrative time to provide all of that information for those reports from your EMS coordinator and from um, city hall. So.
Whoa, so we're really gonna have to, I mean, in order to make that cost effective per year, you're, you're, you're saying that we need to make sure we have at least a good
Good amount of claims to be able to.
We, we have, yeah, I was gonna say, and we do have an annual GMT report that breaks down all of that information that states, you know, the only thing it doesn't include, well, they'll ask us if we can try to give them a number for administrative hours. Um, but that report, you have to include all of that information in there. Um, you're reporting to them, you know, from the administration time, the hourly rate, what wages are. So that gets put into this report. And then it gives you a bottom dollar amount for what you're actually, your overall supplemented for at the end of the year, what, you know, putting in the revenues, taking out the expenditures, and then it gives you a bottom dollar amount. So you know what your, which are actually, and I have, I have a copy of the last report.
Okay.
Um, and there's nothing on there that would be a HIPAA violation, because it's just that, it's all just you know, stating what revenues and expenditures and their calculations, so we can provide that if we would like.
Because in order to participate, uh, we'd have to have at least forty-one hundred dollars a year to put into this and then get that back plus, you know, make it worth our while to get reimbursed.
Yeah, and that's what Michelle was saying, you have to have the claims to be able to.
Yeah.
Correct.
Right.
So let me, let me explain, I guess the best way how this, how the Medicaid program works, just in general, not even the the GMT portion, but just in general. Um, if you get paid for a transport that happens, let's just say a second hundred dollars that you get paid, that's a nice round number. You get paid a hundred dollars. And actually, there's a breakdown at the state, it's actually we submit a claim. Medicaid sees it in their system, they actually take and put thirty dollars into this bank account. The federal government sees that thirty dollars and they put seventy dollars into this, this bank account. And then that's what's used to pay your guys' claim.
So it's a blended?
It's a blended, it's state and federal dollars. It's not just the state pays for these claims, it's actually, there's a calculation that's way above my head that I don't really care about, but it's basically how the breakdown is thirty percent is the state money, seventy percent is the federal chair.
Okay.
So, so when we talk about the GMT program, the state obviously wanted to participate with this supplemental payment program.
To increase our Medicaid reimbursement.
Yeah, to increase these Medicaid payments, but they wanted nothing to do with adding more expense to their bottom dollar. So in order to set it up, they said, okay, we're gonna approve it as it's written in, into law. This started July first, twenty nineteen. They said, the state portion, let's say if you have a hundred dollar, same hundred dollar payment and plus you have a hundred dollar supplemental payment, they're only gonna still put the thirty dollars in. But this other payment, they're gonna make the city or the county or whoever's participating, put the thirty dollars in from that portion. And then, then the federal government, there's seventy dollars in and you get thirty dollars, there are a hundred dollars back. So when you guys put thirty dollars into this program, it's an expense, but really it's coming all back to you in the end, and you're netting a seventy dollars from the federal government.
So you're getting your contradi- contribution back.
Back.
As long as your claims are obviously clean claims, you know, that's why it's so important that we do what we do. And don't get a lot of denials or unanswered, you know, rejections, things like that.
Or incomplete claims.
Right, incomplete claims, things like that. You want your accounts receivable to be fairly clean. Obviously, there's gonna be new claims and payments happen every month, but you want a clean cycle because you have money tied into that.
Okay.
So, so, so anyhow, so med- the good news is Medicaid reimbursement went up, but they made it a little more difficult to get that extra bonus money. Um, you know, nothing's for free, really. If you want extra bonus money, there's some steps that you have to complete. And for, and we all have different responsibilities. So EMS providers, obviously, they still have the same responsibility to document the services provided. The medical necessity, the patient's condition, the, the origin and the destination, so we know the exact loaded miles to bill. Um, demographics, so we can obtain the insurance information, so we know their Medicaid. We can build a claim and add the bonus payment to it. Then the city has their responsibility, because as you were talking about, you have to put forth the, the payment in advance. And then once those claims adjudicate, you get your money back plus the bonus money. And that's the best way I know to explain it, but so the environment that we are in now with the GMT program in our state allows us to be more uh, be more in a position to actually have the re- have the reimbursement to pay for a Medicaid transport. Cause in the past, if we were getting paid a hundred dollars per transport, we were losing money on every transport. You really weren't, because you know, by the time you pay gas and your staff and, you know, the, all those things are not making enough money to really pay for the transports that we have. With this um, with this bonus program, you're able to supplement that income and make it a better, more feasible cost to s- to pay for, so.
And that's a large portion of what's billed, yes.
Say that again.
And that's a large portion Medicare.
Medicaid, uh, Medicaid is, it's, it's ten percent, it, on it, so far this year.
It's order has been ten percent.
Ten percent or so. Actually Medicaid is.
And are we only eligible to be in this because we're a city?
Yeah.
Yes, it's a government, governmental-owned program.
So any other group would not be able to participate.
A private service cannot participate.
Has to be a governmental entity?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And it's optional to participate, I mean, not, you don't have to participate with this. If you don't wanna go to, you know, these smaller services, even, you know, smaller than you guys that we do work with. They decide they don't, they don't wanna do it, because it does take some time to put this cost report together and get it audited, make sure it's accurate. They just don't participate, so.
It probably takes me approximately anywhere from eight to ten hours. And so, and you know, my wages, my administrative wages are not being billed to the ambulance, so, so that's a benefit to them, because you know, I mean, in some cases, I could turn around and say, okay, here's my administrative time to do your report. We would, I mean, we would do that, but, but in the
Cities do.
Some cities do, but in a bigger picture of it, you know, that's a benefit to um, the ambulance uh, fund because we don't, and likewise with all the administration that we do at the city, none of that is you know, administrated, charged back over to. So again, that's a, that's a benefit, the only administrative um, and in wages are, are strictly within the, the the EMS, the coordinators, the, the staffing, um, that work for the, for the ambulance. So I, you know, we, that's where the report is a little bit difficult, because if we were to add in our, I mean, we provide that we are charging our administrative hours, but we're, I, I'll, I'll go on record, because I'm sure most people do, if, but we're really not, uh, because we are one entity, you know. And, and we have a percentage of our wages are paid by tax dollars. So, you know, when.
You wouldn't be ta- you wouldn't be, like, you wouldn't be taxing, the government wouldn't be taxing themselves, or you wouldn't be charging yourself.
Again, it's just from our responsibility at the city level administration, we're receivers, you know, we, that is our piece of it. And just as like Michelle's saying, you know, the other side of it is, you know, uh, definitely the emergency call and treating the, the patient, but then there's the administration too, and the demographics and collecting all of that in order to make sure that it's even, can be billed and billed on time, because just like she's saying, even even if, for example, if we're unable to get that for whatever reason at the time we're doing the transport, and if we don't get it in a timely manner, the clock is ticking. So you've got a certain amount of time, you've even gotta get it collected in order to make it billable too.
So, so we really all work together for it all to come through and then, as far as cash flow going. Um, it, we couldn't one do it without the other, to be honest.
Yep.
So. So, yeah.
In here, in the report, is, is there any um statistics that show like a certain percentage of calls, of transports that didn't get billed because of inaccuracies or not being able to account for information or?
Uh, well, we do have a provider request process. We don't necessarily keep a record of how many requests we do a month, that type of thing. Because we get the information and we get the claim bill correctly. So there are times when there is missing information, um, and it's, it's totally appropriate at the time of transport or before billing to request information if something's missing or clearly inaccurate. If the data service is wrong, um, we certainly don't wanna submit the claim be, with the wrong data service, just because that's what's on the paper. We would say, hey, um, the attachments, the hospital face sheet that we received has a different date and the patient care report is a different day. Can you review this for accuracy so we can be sure we're billing the correct data service? So that happens on an ongoing basis. So, you know, is it excessive? No, but does it happen? Absolutely. There are times when we have to request information. That's a good back, backup for your EMS crew members, just so that they know that their billing company's gonna review things prepayment, so that nothing will be missed. Um, we have an obligation to compliance, just as you do. And um, if we actually cause that ambulance transport to go, to be paid, um, because that's our job, is to cause it to be paid, um, and we cause it to be paid incorrectly, and we could have done something to correct it in advance, that's not a good sign. So we have an obligation to be sure we're compliant and that the claims that we're processing are not only accurate to the documentation that's listed on the patient care report, but they're also according to the medical guidelines that the state and the federal government have set for. So, so we have to have that process between the two, because, because there's gonna be times when there, there is gonna be an error. There's no, I don't think there's any ambulance service that has never had an issue where we haven't asked them to clarify information in advance of billing, so. But we don't, we have not tracked that. What we do track, um, we do have to have an authorization to bill insurance. That is what your patient would sign at the time of transport. Um, the, the Affordable Care Act granted patients the opportunity to decline claims going to their insurance. We have the ability to say, no, you know what, I don't even want anyone to know that this happened. I will pay it out of my pocket, I don't want it to go in to insurance. And so they have that right, so we do have to have an authorization to bill insurance before we send a claim. So that's one thing that um, we do track. We track if we have invalid authorizations. Frequently, we give a report on it, I didn't put that report in here, I don't believe. Um, because it typically has a patient name tied to it, but um, but anyhow, so they, the ambulance gets a feedback, and the reports go both to the city and the ambulance, but so they can see how well they do on getting those authorizations. Here's just a quick scenario, if we don't have an authorization to bill insurance. Well, first if we do, say if we get an authorization to bill insurance, here's my patient care report, I put the charges in the system and I hit the button and electronically my claim is submitted. If I submit the claim today to Medicare or Medicaid, you literally will see that payment in your bank account in two to three weeks. So you can be paid for services that happened in May, you can be paid for them in May. So that's great, that's what you want, turnaround time to happen. If, for example, you don't get an authorization to bill insurance, we receive the ambulance claim and we say, okay, we don't have an authorization to bill this. We do have a process in place where we can send a letter to the patient with the form and request it in advance, so that we can bill the claim. And now that puts that claim on someone else's desk until they send it back to us. So now we may not be able to send that claim to insurance right away, it might take me a month to get that back. Then I start to bill, then I'll bill the claim, put the charges on it, bill the claim out, and you'll get paid in that same time frame. So, so there's some other guidelines in there we have to follow, and so that is something that we track.
Okay.
And we give that feedback to the ambulance provider and, and they use it, you know, to determine if there's extra training that needs to happen or, you know, how they can reduce that, things like that, so.
Okay.
Ambulance is like that feedback, so.
And Michelle, if, so let's say that all the other demographics are collected besides the social security number. You reach out, you bill the customer still based on the information that you have?
We do, we still will forward bill the patient, we don't just put it on hold, um, you know, that patient, that claim becomes a self-pay self-pay type scenario until they contact us. And we'll reach out, I mean, in, in a self-pay scenario, usually with insurance claims, insurance claims get filed immediately so that we can get that turnaround time. But self-pay claims will also get filed immediately, but we start a process in our office. It's a pre-billing review is what we do. We verify demographics, we contact the hospital, we use insurance discovery to find anything possible that helps us to identify insurance while this patient is receiving an in- invoice each month. The patient has the responsibility to contact the provider of service, um, just as you would contact your dentist and pay your dentist bill, you know, they still have the responsibility and they're still held to the amount of the balance on the claim as far as patient responsibility. Now, we go through the process and, and continue to bill them for four cycles, so a hundred and twenty days. And at the time, um, if there's no communication, at a hundred and twenty days, we go through a past due process, which is very similar to the pre-billing sim- process, but we realize things change sometimes. Sometimes patients call the hospital, give them updates. Sometimes, um, you know, we're able to discover what the date of birth and social security number is, or we might have communications come to us by mail. Um, at the time the claim is passed due, we exhaust all options, we check the online, um, portal for Iowa probates, um, Iowa probates online, so we check to see if there's an open estate available for that claim to be filed too, because we are in the business of transporting sick patients, there are times when the patient passes away. And so we do check that portal to get those balances filed with an open probate as soon as possible. We check um, eligibility again, we contact the patient, we contact the hospital, we do all those things that we can do before we send that claim off to the next step. The next step really is collection or Iowa offset. And you guys all know what that Iowa offset program is like, okay? So that balance goes to the patient and can stay there as long as we have a social security number for that patient and the balance is over fifty dollars and they were an Iowa resident, um, then that balance can stay there forever. Um, it may not get, it may get paid in the first year, um, those, those dollars are recouped and then paid back to you. By the way, once we, once we process a claim to Iowa offset, we no longer get billed for any services, because we didn't get the claim paid for you. Um, you are no longer paying PCC for any services for collection. Really, all that happens is if there is an offset or a balance that you have outstanding at Iowa offset, there's a seven, seven dollars, I think it's seven dollars, that's, that's recouped before the payment is sent to you. So the collection rate's very low, but you may have to wait a long time before you're paid on those balances. But it's a sh- you know, I mean, you never really have to give up the right to hold that patient accountable for the services they were provided.
Can I ask another question?
Absolutely.
Um, is that the Iowa offset only available because we're a government entity?
It is.
And what do we typically get from that, do you know?
We don't know, because those, once those, once those funds go off to the city, then now it's in the accounts receivable that's just set for Iowa offset. So like I said, we take it off our books completely. If for whatever reason, and this is, we hold ourselves to the standard that if, if they're coming back to us in a way like they call us and say they have insurance, or they call and, I, I say we didn't process something correctly, then there's a problem, right? So we have very few claims come back to us, because we've resolved that it is a self-pay and the patient is not paying. So typically, once the balance goes to Iowa offset, it doesn't come back to us until tax time when they've, the patient has experienced that this amount of money has been withheld from their tax return, and now they're not happy, so now they're gonna call me. But it's usually two, but.
And right, and those um, documents that I gave to at the council meeting that said that amount, that's the amount that I send um, this year, so in between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, we've collected just under two thousand dollars.
So.
So I, and again, the seven dollars is paid by the customer, we don't pay that, it comes out of the amount that's coming to the city. Um, the, this year, we've had people. Um, the, this year, we've had people where we've sent the letters out and they've actually come in and paid. So just in the last couple of weeks, we've actually had people coming in to pay those off. Or telling me, go ahead and withhold my taxes so that I can get it paid off. Um, so we do send them a letter. We give them fifteen, fifteen days notice. Um, they have the right to contact us, set up a payment plan. Um, come in and pay it, or we withhold the taxes at the end of the fifteen day mark.
Great. And then just to, on top of that, so those receipts all report to the same account. And that would be something that when we're going through reconciliation. You know, that would be the only time that we may have like a difference because we've collected additional. Um, and then that's how we document it between our reconciliation.
Right. If you collect an offset.
Yes.
We wouldn't post that as part of our deposit. So you might have a thousand dollars that we don't have recorded for that month. Because again, we don't charge, we don't enter it and we don't charge it for it.
So it's probably hard keeping track too, if that money comes in a year later or however long.
We have documentation. We have the letters and stuff that we send out. Um, there, so there's little papers that come in and it has the customer's information. It says the amount that they have coming for their return. And again, that's only from Iowa. It's not federal. It's only the Iowa. Um, and then we have um, papers for the Iowa um, income offset, those documents that I gave you. I didn't give you the rest of the information because it actually has the customer's information and um, call numbers and all that kind of stuff. And it's in a packet that we put together and are able to document that.
Because also I should say, we, that is audited by, so we have our annual audit. Um, that information is pulled as well when they're looking at our audit. Um, because when our audit is happening with um, our annual audit, I should say. We, they're also communicating with PCC. Um, and because there, that all of our receipting and our reconciliation is audited. And it's in line and they'll reach out to PCC and they'll, they'll ask for some testing or they'll visit. And then they ask for your audit to do something, yeah.
So. Yeah, so we have our, our audits, so we do our payments. We, there's a report that is compiled. It is sent to PCC. And then after that, it is looked at by me and then it is looked at by our auditors as well. So there's a huge process that we have established to make sure that we're balancing. And again, the only time a differential would be there is when we're collecting income offset. Because they have already written it off their books. We have now taken it in there and are collecting that money.
And you do this monthly?
Um, it, Iowa income offset is done every year.
Every, just once a year?
Once a year because we don't have enough to keep filing it. And really, the whole purposes of it is you're only getting it if somebody wins lottery. Or if somebody is paying their taxes. So we file it around tax time. It's only February, March time frame.
Okay.
When we file it. And then that's when you see that total amount that we're you doing.
Yeah.
Or the amount that I'm sending to income offset. And then I go into a system, I put their information in there. That's how they know how to hold the money. If I don't go into that system and put that in there, they wouldn't know to hold the money.
Right.
That's why we need that social security number.
Okay. What we do do on a monthly basis is reconcile.
Yes. Yep, that is done monthly.
Yeah. And we tie back to the actual transports that are completed in the ambulance services software. So um, I have given you guys this other packet. This is the financial summary. Um, if you look at the very first page, and Travis has kind of circled it on his, but down on the left column. Yeah. But on the left column at the very top, it will say total PCRs. So this one is for January. There's sixty-one PCRs for January. Those are the amount, those are the actual transports that are in the ambulance services software. And then if you go further down, where you see at the very bottom, no charge ticket. Out of sixty-one, there were twenty-eight tickets that were no charged. It could be a cancel call. They could be a patient refused it. They could be no patient found. They could be any of those things. So for your ambulance service, those, obviously there's going to be some costs tied to that. Because they might have gotten all the way there and found there's no patient, something of that nature. But they're not a billable event, okay? So the service, the ambulance service is going to have costs when they're not recovering, you know, reimbursement. But out of that sixty-one transports, then there's actually only thirty-three that are billable. Okay? So billable transports, meaning the patient was in the back of the ambulance, transported to the next destination, typically the hospital. So, so we confirm all with their software. So obviously they're held to the responsibility of entering everything and we confirm what they've entered. So there's kind of a three, three points of accountability. If we're entering everything they, they gave us and we're balancing to them. There's just, any discrepancies will be found long before an external audit. So um, early on, we had to set up, we had to establish processes. And we worked with you guys closely. And you know, we probably don't talk as much as we did in the early days because now the system works really well. But, but the state auditors do um, expect that you have that process built in. And when we were contracted initially, and I can't remember if you said that specifically, but I know that was something that you guys thirsted for. Is the ability to be balancing with your billing company because you did not have that before.
Yep, it was a comment that we received in two thousand seventeen eighteen fiscal, fiscal year audit. And the comment was that we needed to create a reconciliation with our third-party candidates. Yep. And that was when we originally entered into our contract because we were not able to get that established with the previous um, third party. And so um, because that was what they needed to be able to do is that they needed to see that we were doing that on a monthly basis. And then likewise, our auditors needed to be able to audit the work that we were doing. Um, and when you say you compare it to what was entered, that's our paramedic or EMT that's entering that into the system, right?
Yeah, okay. And I, I can't speak for them, like I, I don't know for sure how they do it. But typically the crew member on the, on the transport enters their own patient care report. So, and they mark it complete and then they move from there, so. Um, that information comes to us automatically. We have been there to do documentation training and they do a good job documenting patient information. Um, other than the, you know, random requests that we may have. We, I checked today and we really don't have any outstanding issues that we're not getting recovered or things of that nature, so. So that's going well. Um, this report kind of shows you the fluctuation of your accounts receivable. Um, the very first month was January. If you go down to ending AR, that was after January's business. There's a hundred and fifty-nine thousand four sixteen ninety-five. That was the number on the accounts receivable. But you can see that your, your months fluctuate anywhere from ten thousand to thirty, thirty-five thousand. It just kind of depends on a few things, on authorizations to bill insurance. On good demographics and how soon we receive those trip reports. If I receive a patient care report before, today's the third, right? Today's the third. If I receive a patient care report before, today is thirty-one days in the month. Before about the fifteenth, everything provided right before the fifteenth, we can have entered and submit. So it can get paid by the end of the month. So, you know, constant flow of information going helps cash flow. And it all shows in your reports. It really does. So, but um, you can see from the beginning of January, the January accounts receivable. To March, at the end of March, we have one nineteen six twenty-four eighty on our accounts receivable. That looks very clean to me. If I look at the actual accounts receivable by payer, which is a few pages back for you. We really only had under insurance billing. We only have six percent of balances in the hundred and twenty day plus column. So that's pretty good. That, it kind of looks like this. I don't know if you can see that, but it's got that big line across. Um, but if you look to the bottom, seventy-four percent of the balances are in the zero to thirty.
Fourth page.
Fourth page. But this kind of gives you, and we, again, we look at this every month. Where that's what you're, you're not just hiring us to submit a claim. You're really hiring us to do it right. To do it on time and to make sure that nothing sits there that's not ever getting paid to you. Because that cash flow is important for your bottom line. So if you look in the insurance aging, there's six percent under the hundred and twenty day column. Four percent under the ninety and hundred and twenty day column. And those could be, we found insurance on a self-pay, two months into the invoice cycle. We found insurance, so we build the claim. When the patient called us and gave us their insurance. So that could be why it's over there, but we just submitted the claim. You know, it could be something like that. It also could be the initial claim got, got denied because of lack of information and we filed an appeal. So we have an appeal sitting there waiting to process. It could be several things, but under the insurance column, we expect that insurance claim to pay and process. To the full amount of the balance or to the fee schedule like Medicare, Blue Cross or Medicaid would pay you. Okay? It doesn't mean that we're expecting, now remember, I said we have a total of a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. On our accounts receivable today. It doesn't mean that we're expecting a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars total, right? Because if you look, this report tells you a great story. At the top is your self-pay balance. Your self-pay balances are seventeen percent. And this is where um, you were asking earlier, of all the totals, what's my self-pay? Well, I couldn't, I, I wasn't sure if you wanted to know a summary of it or like Travis gave you an average payment. But this is over a hundred and twenty days. You guys have nineteen thousand dollars, six hundred and seven and forty-eight cents at self-pay. So that tells you not every self-paid patient is paying you right away.
So that's the people that have not yet paid.
They've not yet paid. They haven't identified insurance. And they haven't contacted us to set up a pay plan.
Okay.
So. So, or they may, they might be paying, I guess that's, they could be balances that are being paid on a monthly basis. So we do keep some, we do keep a certain portion of that. If they're paying on a current, on a bill and they're keeping it current every single month. We won't recommend that to go to Iowa offset or a collection agency. We're going to continue to accept their monthly installments. So that is going to be reflected in that balance too. But we can't control that income. I can't at all. The only thing I can control is the insurance aging part, okay?
And a self-paid, they can pay you what, ten dollars a month?
Yeah. Well, we recommend then to set up, uh, we recommend at least a fifty-dollar installment. Um, whatever your wishes are and sometimes whatever we can get for you to keep them on a current basis. Um, to, truthfully, we, we try to tell them, well, ten dollars is going to take you, you know, three hundred months to do. Is that reasonable? Do you want to, you know, shorten the timeframe up? Do you want to be done by next year of December? If that's the case, your installment would be forty-five dollars. So we try to look at it on a time by time basis. And we are accept, you know, encouraging them to make it a credit card payment. If, you know, we're not telling them to put it on their credit card bill, but if they have another way of making payment, we're recommending that they do that too. So however, it works for them to satisfy the bill for you, rather than have it go off to Iowa offset. At the time we contact the patient and when we have verbal contact with them. We do let them know that their balance will go to an Iowa offset program. And it will be recouped from a future tax return because that is what the provider participates in. So that kind of encourages them to pay because they like to protect their tax return, so. Um, anyhow, so.
What is this AOB signature?
The AOB signature is, that is the fact that we didn't have one at the time we, we transported. The authorization to bill insurance. That's what that is. So on this report, we do have one, well, or two, but the balance is one thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars. That's in that thirty-one to forty days. So that's money, that's money right there. We have insurance identified, but we don't have an authorization to go insurance. And the other side is, you know, Medicaid, Medicare, they're all imposing strict time limits. From when we can um, submit claims. I was saying VA is a ninety day. Well, Medicaid's six months. Six months goes fast. And patients who are Medicaid don't tend to care if they contact you or not. So the best time to get their authorization is when they need your help, right then and there. So that's what we encourage, but. So with this report, I don't know if you found this helpful, but it really gives you a good idea. Um, that accounts receivable, we balance with the city every single month. But it does not reflect and uh, that there's a hundred, you know, nineteen thousand dollars there to be recovered. You know, we know for a fact we're receiving anywhere from ten to thirty-five thousand. And it kind of fluctuates a little bit, but for the most part, it's staying in the twenty to thirty-five thousand range. Um, you know, so monthly you're getting constant income. But we can never guarantee out of the pool that we have, who's going to pay and who's not going to pay their bill, so. So when you have an account receivable, we, we manage some accounts receivable that are millions of dollars. And you know, typically those, those leaders understand, they don't, they know it's not an entire five million that they're going to receive that. But they understand what their normal AR is and what their normal income is, so. And they do the best they can to put processes in place and people in place to do the jobs that they're supposed to. To get the best outcome, right? The best outcome for reimbursement for your handbill. So, um, okay, let's see if there's any other reports. Um, then the next report is a level of care summary.
Probably about, about ten minutes.
Okay, this, this report probably doesn't tell you a whole lot, just how many ALS versus BLS type transfer you can do. Um. And then I think that's about it. The practice analysis in the back is more of a summary as well. Um. But I think that's the basic reports. The very last page is the G and T report. She's got it marked in the red box for you. Um. That just shows you the charges that we billed for that particular month and the payments we received for G and T. So, you know, it wasn't really outstanding for March. It just means we only had one Medicaid claim to file and we got the Medicaid reimbursement back. So, um, nothing much more to report on that, but. Everything is found in the report so we can literally show you kind of whatever you want to see.
And before I got here, did you explain what ALS and BLS was?
I didn't. Advanced life support. I did look, we did go through the fee schedule though.
Okay.
And the fee schedule shows you, that's the first page of this packet. Um, it shows you the difference in reimbursement from advanced life support or basic life support. Advanced life support is, you know, advanced life, life-saving procedures done and documented based on state requirements. And so we have to pick the level of service out and bill at the correct level of service, but you're paid differently.
Right. And so advanced life support means that the paramedic or EMTs have to have that certification to provide that kind of level of care. So if we don't have volunteers that are certified in that on call or on our clock.
Right.
We won't be able to provide care to those patients that need that, those.
Right.
And we'd have to call mutual aid or.
Yes. Yeah, and when you call for a nearby paramedic, you typically have to pay for that.
Right.
You can absorb that service into your billing, but it's still a little bit extra cost. So that staffing and certification, if your ambulance has a good outreach and they're bringing in and. You know, it's, it's hard. Right now with volunteers, it's hard to find volunteers and it's hard to find people who are willing to train to those level of services. So if you have a really, you know, good outreach, that's amazing for your service and it comes out in reimbursement. You will be, you know, paid higher when services are provided at that level without that expensive of paramedic coming in.
And so when, when we are called to, like if, if uh, Willton needs a paramedic. And we're called there, we get extra money for that too, right?
That, if they need a paramedic, yes, they'll pay you your paramedic fee.
Okay.
So it's usually like two hundred. And that allows them to bill ALS because you were on board providing ALS care for them.
Okay.
And then they pay you out of their proceeds.
Okay.
So you don't just leave and not get paid, so.
That's part of our, we have the agreements with, for that. I don't want to call it mutually, but we have.
It's a tier agreement.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And likewise with Johnson County, we call in Johnson County and then we pay them that. I think we all run about the same. And I just wanted to clarify that from, from city administration, from what our responsibility is. Is we receive what we receive from those payments. That's the only, that's the only part of that, of the entire program that we participate in. And then our part is then to reconcile with PCC. So the billing is one hundred percent done through um, our ambulance department. And I kind of call that the front end. And then we have the, the billing is the middle part. And then we're pretty much almost the final part because we're. And then we're pretty much almost the final part, because we're receiving the payment and then we're finalizing a reconciliation back over.
And, and we deposit the payment into.
It's all credit.
Will we code it, however you guys do that?
So it's all, yep, we have ambulance revenue. That's all into that line item. It, it wouldn't go anywhere else, because that's where we pull that reconciliation report to provide.
It's just that one place.
Yep, and that's the same with income offset. Income offset goes there, because it's still ambulance revenue.
So your state auditor would look to make sure that all those ambulance funds balance into that.
Yeah, that's what they do, is they pull our report from that fund and then they compare it to your report.
Yeah.
Yep.
So basically, we basically, you know, off of what transfers you do. We apply the charges at the lowest service that you're able to bill for, based off your fee schedule. And we make sure they get paid at that level. We make sure it's right. And nothing's missed in between. We make sure that they're getting paid. They just have to receive it. I don't mean it to sound like that, but, but you have to then take all the money, because we don't do that. It's kind of that built-in checks and balance. But we appreciate your time. Any other questions or?
Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.